Okay, good afternoon. We're calling the Planning Commission of February 4th, 2016 to order. Ms. Rodriguez, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Commissioner Lodge.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Higgins.
Here.
Vice Chair Pujol.
Here.
Chair Campanella.
Here.
First item would be preliminary matters. Ms. Calarte, do we have any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items?
Yes, Chair Campanella. Item five has been postponed, and the new date has yet to be determined. So that will be scheduled at another date.
Okay, thank you. Are there any announcements or appeals?
We did receive one appeal of the staff—oh, I'm sorry—of the staff hearing officer that will be coming to you, and that's on a project on Milpa Street.
Okay, thank you. Next item is review consideration in action on the following draft Planning Commission minutes and resolutions. The first one are the minutes of January 7th, 2016. Do we have any comments on those minutes from the planning commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to acknowledge Ms. Rodriguez again on her excellent note-taking and the format of the minutes. And I only say this again because we seem to have had one of these every meeting for the past month where it's a first visit with a lot of discussion, and it'll be back again in the future. And it's much easier for me when the minutes get done like this to just go through the minutes rather than force myself to sit down through three and a half hours or six hours of a hearing. So I just want to say thank you again. I know it's an extra step, so thanks, Julie.
Thank you for all of us. Any comments on the minutes? Commissioner Thompson.
For Ms. Rodriguez, did you get the—on page two, it would be item B, Chair Campanella? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Okay, if not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Moved.
We have a motion in a second. Commissioner Lodge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimously? Next, we're going to have the minutes for January 14th, 2016, along with the PC resolution for 2609 de la Vina Street. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes and resolution?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next, we will take any comments from members of the public for any item that's not on this agenda. Are there any members of the public that are wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Next, we will go on to an item, a consent item, for a coastal development permit. And Ms. Calarte, do we have any requests for public speakers? We do not either, I don't think.
Do not.
Okay. And then we will be getting a presentation, or is it the favor of any of the planning commissioners to waive the staff presentation for this consent item?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would like to move to waive the staff presentation. We've visited the site and have seen what's there.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have first and a second. All in favor of waiving the staff presentation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? With that, without a staff presentation, is there any discussion that the—any planning commissioner would like to have in this item, or could we move for approval of the consent item?
Move approval of the consent item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much for—so—and there will be—Ms. Calarte, there will also be a ten-day appeal period on a consent item as well?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a new item. It's an application for a coastal development—pardon me—conditional use permit. And we have a staff presentation. Mr. Bowman, would you like to handle that, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This item is a request for a conditional use permit for an FM radio antenna at 1 North Caye Caesar Chavez. This is an aerial kind of vicinity map. The 7.44 acre site is shown here, outlined in yellow. And there's the 208,000 square foot Vercaul Building. That building is outlined in red. So the proposal is to add an FM antenna on the roof of this building in the location where that yellow star is. The project's located in the appealable jurisdiction of the coastal zone, but it qualifies for a coastal exemption because it involves no risk of adverse environmental effect, does not adversely affect public access, or result in any change of use contrary to the Coastal So this—again, here's the same—the site is basically the entire screen shown there. And then the building is outlined in red, and that red arrow is pointing to the corner of a rectangle, which is an existing mechanical equipment platform on the roof of this building, supporting some large ductwork. So on that corner of that platform would be where the antenna is attached. The purpose of the antenna is for the church to receive a signal from another location and transmit it locally in Santa Barbara. It's called a translator antenna. The church would also use it to transmit or broadcast local church services, et cetera. These are elevations of the building. The upper elevation shows one end of the building, almost the entire building. And you can see how the roof kind of goes up and down with ridges and clear-story windows running along the ridges and valleys. And this is that existing platform, and then the new post and antenna on top of the This is a closer view. Elevations on the right, and then a perspective drawing on the left, showing a four-foot round steel pole with angled—angle iron braces to support it. And then on top of that is the actual antenna. And there's the antenna. It's like a four-inch square loop, approximately 24 inches in diameter. And then the way it's twisted up and down is about 36 inches high, and it's made of half-inch round aluminum. So the applicable general plan policies are really about the visual impacts of an Environmental review, visual resources talks about public views and viewpoints, and also to enhance visual quality. So again, here's a little bit closer aerial view, and there's yellow arrows here indicating where we have photo simulations. It shows the vantage points of the photo sims. The lower one down here at the bottom wouldn't fit on the screen. That is further to the south from Cabrillo Boulevard. This line here is the railroad track. So then below that would be Chase Palm Park and then East Cabrillo Boulevard. So this is a view from East Yan and Ali Street, the entrance into the El Estero. We went there on our site visit, and you can come directly in here and kind of go straight into the Calvary Chapel parking lot. The way these photo sims are worked, they had to add a red rectangle to kind of highlight the photo sim where the antenna is simulated. The little stick inside that rectangle shows the simulation of the antenna. This is another view from East Yan and Ali, close to the intersection with North Caye Caesar Chavez. There again, if you look very closely inside that rectangle is a little simulation of the antenna support. This is the driveway into the 1 North Caye Caesar Chavez property. In this case, just the view angle, the antenna would be blocked by that building, the edge of the roof. You wouldn't have any view at all here. And then, getting back to that general plan policy about public views, this East Cabrillo Boulevard area would be considered a public view, but the antenna is pretty far from it and hidden by—behind trees, and it would be extremely small from this far away, anyway. And then from the north, actually, the northbound side of the 101, this is a distant view. You would have a sightline of it, but it would be very small off in the distance. So given the small size of it, plus it—kind of the visual context that the antenna is in—it's in an industrial area, it's on a huge building, doesn't seem to pose any general plan visual policy concerns. The ABR did see it. They found that it was acceptable, estimated. They didn't even suggest any changes to the proposed color or anything. They thought it was basically a non-issue because it's so small and given the area where it's located. And they said this after Planning Commission review, if it's approved, it can return back to the ABR on their consent agenda for a formal approval. So for any conditional use permit, we have these general findings. And I can just touch on what we had in the staff report regarding consistency with these findings. Number one, the antenna installation is essential and desirable. Number two, the project has very minor impact. It's not detrimental, wouldn't affect property values. It avoids impacts to surrounding properties. The way it's located fairly centrally on the building and on the site, it's pretty far from any surrounding properties, anyway. Number four, has no effect at all on access or to the coast or parking, and the appearance is compatible with the character of the area. And then, in addition to those general findings, for any CUP, there are specific findings in this code section for antennas. And the way they're numbered—they're numbered A, B, C in the ordinance. So it's not exactly a shared support structure with another antenna. It's not co-locating with an antenna, but they are taking advantage of the structure that supports the mechanical equipment. The site is very large, and the property line has no abutting residential use, and aren't any residential uses in proximity to the project. Item C, the ABR found that there's no visual impact. That finding C is actually—requires that the project has been reviewed by the ABR, so they have done that. And then D, we have a study that was attached to your staff report that shows compliance with the FCC emissions regulations. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the CUP with the findings and conditions of approval in the staff report. This concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from Mr. Bowman, please, from the commissioners? Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think there's actually a question from Mr. Vincent. We just touched upon it on lunch today, but the—when—I understand you have to do a CUP in any zone for this type of installation, but are there—are there issues that could come down the line on co-location that once you put something in place on a building like this and you make these findings for visual or use or that type of thing, that you erode out your ability to control that in the future due to co-location rules from the state?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, it's—they're actually—the co-location rules have come from the FCC itself, not from the state. And they do—the FCC's rules do create what I will kind of shorthand term "safe harbor" provisions. In other words, a co-location could come in without a full review if it stays within a certain size. In other words, that it's not not more—not taller than—I think—the exact percentages are escaping me right now. It's measured both in a percentage of the of the height as well as a fixed number. So, you know, if it's no more than 10 feet taller or something close to that, and it can't expand beyond the base station, that was where the pole is, more than six feet, I believe, is the distance. So in this particular case, you have—you have—the base location would be the pole on the top of the building that would establish the height, the maximum height of this application. A co-located antenna would be limited to a height above the height that is currently being considered, and any antenna that might be attached to this location could not be more than six or eight feet wider from the from the edge of the pole. And in that case, they would be—they would fall within the safe harbor provisions.
You just get one baseline on that, or do you get to stack them? As you—as the first co-location gets something, does the next co-location get to build upon the second location?
It是我的 understanding is that it's the first location. That establishes the height over which any other co-locations can go. So you get one base station, and then the co-locations have to fall within the safe harbor established off of that base station. You don't get an aggregate continuance, you know, ad infinitum.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We can come back to some questions. Does the applicant have any—have a presentation or make any comments? No? Okay. So I'll bring it back to the commission. See, no public speakers in here. We'll come back to the commission for any additional questions. Commissioner Pujol.
Thank you. Actually, I would appreciate it if the applicant could come up, because I think most of my questions could be addressed by the applicant. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Please state your name.
John Kikekandall would do that.
Thanks.
My first question is just to reconfirm on our site visit on Tuesday. It was mentioned that you had submitted a color sample to the ABR, and they were—that was part of what they saw when they—when they conceptually approved the project for us to review. So could you just state again—I believe you said it—you had a name of it, but I think what it turns out to be—and that's what I'm asking this question—is—it seems to be kind of a sky gray type of color. Is that right?
Let me—let me have Michael describe the color.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Pujol, members of the commission. My name is Michael Holliday. We're the architects for the project. Yeah, we tried to select a color that actually sort of disappears, and even in the photo sims, you couldn't even see the antenna up there. That's why we put the big red rectangles around them. It's sort of a galvanized metal. It's a gray—it's a light—it's a gray, light gray. And we looked at a couple different options, by the way, and that was whether it was white, black, some other color, and this was the one that disappeared the most. So it's sort of a, you know, light gray-blue color that sort of hopefully will disappear, and you won't even be able to see it. So—
So my follow-up question to that is, in our staff report and in your materials and the plans we have, there's no mention of what the color will be. Is that something that will be—or maybe staff could answer this—that will be specified as part of the design review approval?
We can add that as a planning commission condition of approval, and then it'll be carried out through the ABR.
So that it's specified, because otherwise, we have no document that actually indicates what the color really is intended to be.
I believe it's on the plans. I'll take a look at these drawings, too.
Okay.
But also, as a final review item with ABR, we're happy to get that clarified. We did show them a color sample, and they thought it looked great, and it was the appropriate color. So I believe it's on here, but if it's not—it certainly—for final, we can include that.
That would be satisfactory to me. Okay, my next question, and Mr. Holliday, maybe you're a good one to answer this one, too. The other thing I didn't see—I read in the report, but I didn't—or I couldn't interpret from the plans—is it mentions that all the equipment will be located on the interior. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
The radio equipment or—
The equipment for the antenna will be not on the roof, but inside?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah. The the equipment for the radio station itself, if you will, is all contained inside the building. You're not going to see anything. The only thing that we have to project is the antenna up above that area to broadcast. This is a very low-power antenna, and which is why it's so small.
Right.
So yeah, everything is located inside the building. The only thing that's located outside is that pole. I'm sorry I couldn't be there to do the site walk with you, but it's virtually invisible from the ground plane anywhere around the building. It's not until you get back, you know, a quarter mile from the property that you can start to see it. But it's also adjacent to a fairly significant amount of existing rooftop mechanical equipment that is all around it. So there's a big sort of bulky platform up there, a lot of other mechanical equipment, and we're—we're building upon that, and it's set back significantly from the edge of the building, because that would be the only place you could even see in. So we felt like it was, looking at all the options, the best possible location for a little radio antenna like this.
And I agree. I don't think—I don't have a problem with the potential visibility of it, but I do want it to be clear in the plans that if the equipment is intended to be on the interior, I'd like to see it stated somewhere. Is it on—I don't see it on the plans either. So what I'm trying to avoid is overly vague description, and then later find out that circumstances have changed and the equipment goes on the top when we didn't expect it. So is that something else you could detail in your plans when it—
Sure, we can provide some clarification on that. The only thing that you're going to see is what ABR has seen. So there's a whole system that goes to—as part of this, but what you—what ABR is recommending approval of, and what I believe you guys are, is just what you see on the exterior, which is what's included in the drawings, and—
Could there be a specification or a note on the plans that—
We can add something like that if you want, but I mean, it's—it's basically the rest of the radio equipment is inside the building. So the only thing that the commission is approving essentially is what Tony—and if you want to pull that up, Tony, just to look at it, because you can see essentially what you're approving is that little—and on that platform, it's interesting because there's equipment that sticks up about five or six feet high that goes almost as tall as those brackets. So the pole is pretty insignificant, but that's all that's going up there. There's a wire that's coming down from that antenna that actually goes down through the roof and connects to everything down below it, but there's nothing else that—I—I that seems to be appropriate that we would specify unless you're wanting to make it clear that there's no other radio equipment on the—
That's what I want to make clear.
Which we can—
That's what I want to make clear.
Yeah, it's not a problem adding that note and clarification.
If you'd be willing to do that, I'd be perfectly satisfied with trusting that you will.
Sure. I mean, it's not my problem.
Okay, so I do have some additional questions, and I don't know if they're for Mr. Holliday or Mr. Kikekandall. But I do think maybe the applicant can answer these. I looked at the permit description for the FCC, and I understand that you received an extension, and so that's valid for another 18 months in order for you to obtain this permit. So I get that, and it's a very tight, clear description. I believe what I also read, I think in a couple of different places, is that the use of this radio antenna is ancillary to the church use. But what I don't understand, and maybe you have some history on the permit history for the church site itself, is does the church have an actual separate permit for the church? Or is it a tenant improvement of a certain zone district that didn't require a specialized permit? Do you know what the permit history is for the church itself?
I know to some degree that the city—I think it was maybe 10 years ago or 15 years ago for what they refer to as the Vercaul Building, they did a matrix and outlined all of the different types of uses that are permitted and allowed to occupy that—that building, that 200,000 square foot building, and the church is one of them.
Church is one of them.
Yeah, and there are approximately 40,000 square feet of that. So they are a legal permitted use in that building.
Okay.
And it's consistent with this matrix that the city put together several years ago for the Vercaul Building.
I see. So then it doesn't need to go through a separate building, probably, but not necessarily—
Building permit, yes.
Yeah, yeah, great. Okay. That is helpful. But I do appreciate that it's—the purpose of the antenna is that it's ancillary to the church use. And one of the things that I will be asking my fellow commissioners to consider is including language along that lines in the—in the draft conditions, because it is for that particular purpose, as you've stated, but not necessarily for general FM radio station purposes, is my understanding.
That is my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one question, maybe to Mr. Vincent. This is on Mr. Bowman's slide. Conditional use permit general findings, so it quotes our municipal code. Number one, the way I read this, use is deemed essential and desirable, not or desirable. And so how—in your opinion, how important is that—is it for us to make a finding that it's essential versus desirable by the applicant?
The language in the in the ordinance says "and," because it is quoted here in the staff report.
This is deemed essential and desirable.
That—that is for each individual commissioner to determine in their own manner. The the findings are are what they are, and the commission considers that language without definition. You use common dictionary definitions for those terms, and you consider the proposed use against those—that language.
Okay, that's my only question. Mr. Holliday, did you want to make a remark?
Yes, Commissioner Schwartz, members of the commission. The reason that this—and I appreciate Commissioner Pujol's question about this, because the real reason of the having the antenna is actually to minimize the amount of people that can come to the building. It was actually 20 years ago. I was the architect that helped get this whole thing approved way back when, and that's when we developed the Vercaul matrix for the entire 208,000 feet. So it's probably looking better than it ever has, believe it or not, with parking and uses and so forth. And so nothing will be more intensive than already exists there. But the the goal of this is that it is able to repeat, and if people don't need to come to the location, they can be within the close vicinity and be able to listen to something on the radio. So the goal is sort of a more sustainable, less intensive use, not one that's going to build, you know, be bringing more people there. It's sort of how do you—how do you get the message out without having to have, you know, everybody come to the space? So hopefully, that's clear.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Pujol, do we have another question? Is your light still on? Okay. Any questions from the other commissioners? Okay, then we'll go to discussion and discussion on the request for the conditional use permit along with the findings that we have to find. Does anyone want to start their discussion items? Any discussion? Any discussion? Commissioner Pujol?
Thank you. As indicated in my questions earlier, I have two recommended clarifications. I think I would call them to the draft conditions of approval. First of all, I find it quite easy, given the description of the project and the report and the plans and the discussion today, that I could personally make the findings required for the project. But I do find that the conditions of approval could use a bit more specification, mostly as to the project description purposes of the antenna use. So, I would suggest two places for that. The first is on the very first page of the conditions under item B1, approved project. And there, I would add something along the lines of the development of the real property approved by the planning commission on February 4th, 2016 is limited to, and I have an insertion here, the ancillary church use of A, and then go on to say, radio, antenna, and related improvements going on to finish that sentence to clarify that it is related to the church in its purpose. And then the second recommended wording change I would make is a reference to the FCC permit granted August 20, 2014. And I would add that to item, on the next page, I guess, page two of the conditions, on item 2C, under approved limitations, and put that wording in that paragraph C.
Can you maybe just, now, I just turned to the spot. Do you want to maybe repeat the wording you would like and where to insert it?
Okay, so first of all, it's page two of the conditions, item 2, middle of the page, subsection C, where it talks about deviations. It's approval limitations, and then it talks about deviations may require changes to the permits and et cetera. In that paragraph, I would insert a reference to the FCC permit granted August 20, 2014, because it gives a very succinct description of the height, the permit itself, and the limitations. And I understand that's the one you would be operating under.
And where would you like to insert that? Between what lines? Or at the bottom of that paragraph?
I would suggest the bottom, but I think the phrase could go in more than one place in that paragraph. I see the applicant up here.
Commissioner Pujol, just a clarification. We were able to receive an extension to the FCC construction permit. We have another 18 months.
Right.
So, the August 2014 is set to expire this month, February 2016, but we have now, from February 2016, another 18 months to actually get, obtain the building permit and construct it. So, we may want to reference, if we're going to include that, maybe the current FCC construction permit, which I'll have to see if I have it, if we're going to add that language to that condition.
Ah, so, they actually replace that permit with another one when they extend it? They don't just say, it's the date of expiration is extended?
References the original one, and it gives you another 18 off of that one, 18 months, excuse me.
Well, if you can, I don't know how to propose to say that, but if you have some substitution that would work or staff, I think you understand my intent.
I think you could refer to the permit, then put "as extended."
Ah, okay.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, Commissioner Higgins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I guess I don't understand Commissioner Pujol's questions, specifically the second one about the FCC permit. Where are you, where are you going with that? Because what happens if the applicant's permit from the FCC changes, or they need to get a new one, or something else changes with regard to the call signs on that permit? Then, then we've tangled up this particular approval. So, what's, what's the point of tying all these things together?
Sure, sure, maybe I can elaborate on my intent a little bit.
And my other question relates to the, your first question about the embedding the word ancillary or accessory into the conditions of approval. It's already, sort of, needs to be ancillary or accessory within the confines of our zoning codes, or you're just sort of adding a language to the conditions that says, and it needs to be consistent with the zoning code? Because it's already.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, do you mind? Okay.
Commissioner Pujol?
Looking at the conditions of approval, there really isn't a project description in there, except for reference to the plans. So, the changes that the applicant has agreed to make to a couple of the plans, like adding a reference to the color and, and that, the equipment, a note that the equipment would be on the interior, is fine for that, because the conditions do reference the plan. But I couldn't find anywhere in the draft conditions where it actually said that the purpose of the antenna was to be an ancillary use to the church. So, without that, and without reference to the FCC permit, which is the only thing I could find in the conditions of approval, it tells me how tall it is. If there's another project description similar to the one in the FCC permit that perhaps could be supplanted into the conditions, that would be fine, too. But I was looking for something in the conditions that showed the parameters of the use and the antenna that was a little more clear and controlling than what we see on the plans and diagrams. And so, that was the point. So, in one, the fact that it's ancillary and for the church use tells me that it's not a generalized radio antenna for any purpose that could be bought and sold for any other purpose. It is for this purpose, and it makes sense. That's why it's designed the way it is, and it is, you know, very supportable in my mind for that purpose. But to broaden it out and make it some general radio antenna approval is a little less clear to me what that could potentially entail in the future. And then, the other part, like I said, the FCC permit, I looked at that, and I just thought it had a very succinct, clear description of the limitations of the antenna itself. It has the megawatts in it, I think, and it has the height, and it has some other provisions. It was the wording of that description that I liked, not necessarily so much the permit itself. So, it seemed like an easy way to insert it, but if that, if there is another option for doing that, that would be fine with me, too.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Pujol. Commissioner Higgins, does that answer your question? Okay. Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I have the same issue with the first one anyhow, but I think we're approving a land use, and I'm confused why we're getting all wrapped up into who's using that approved use. So, I guess, Mr. Vincent, I'd just like to ask you if CUPs around the whole city for this type of installation have to be approved for the installation? And it's for another low wattage radio station, and that radio station sells to another one, goes out of business, another one comes in there, is that still a valid land use that continues on?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that is one way for a CUP to operate, yes.
That would be, so far as this is presented to us, how this one would work, right?
The, well, the applicant has, has explained its intended use for the antenna. One, you know, I mean, I think I've, I've given the commission this advice in the past regarding conditions of approval. If an applicant is willing to accept a proposed condition of approval, I, you know, I'm not going to tackle the commission to not consider that, if it gives the commission more certainty about what the proposed use is. In this case, as, rather than, and maybe this would address Commissioner Higgins' concerns regarding the use of the term ancillary, one, one approach would be for the commission to grant this application for, that it, that its use is limited to this particular applicant. And if the applicant is willing to accept that condition, then it would, it would, the use would exist as long as the applicant is a tenant of this building. And if and when its tenancy ends, the, their, their occupation of the building itself would end, as well, the, the use of the antenna would end at that point.
Okay, so, I think that's about what Commissioner Pujol is asking for, but that's not what I'm going to suggest or would ask you to accept. I think it's adequate as it is, and, and you should have the flexibility of the land use approval, so, but if you can, I think that specific type of language is what you need to see, see if that will fly both up here and with the, with the applicant, because that seems to be in the direction you're going. But I, I think that's a little, a little too harsh. I think we can make, I can make the findings without additional language in the conditions.
If I can, back to Commissioner Higgins while we're on this topic, and then I'll go to Commissioner Schwartz. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I guess I, I think I see where you're going, Commissioner Pujol. I just, the staff report states that it's ancillary to the property, and I think that's where we need to hang our hat. And I just am sort of philosophically opposed to tangling up the conditions of approval with, or overburdening them at all with anything else that's not totally necessary in order for us to make the findings. So, that's all. I can already make the findings now.
Commissioner Higgins, just a question for you. There were two changes that were recommended for the conditions. One was the ancillary use, and the other was to tie the project description to what's in the FTC permit. Do you have a problem with making that change on the approved limitations reference of the project description to the permit?
I think that's what I was sort of diplomatically stating, is I don't think that they're necessary, but not going to cause a stink.
Okay. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you. I have one new question, and then, and then some comments. So, when I look at our item, as it's described in the staff report, I see that the applicant is Jacques Investments LP for this address. It's not the church. So, are, Mr. Vincent, are we looking at an application for the property or the use that the tenant is requesting? Because that may get to someone, an underlying question about how we should consider the CUP and these conditions.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the applications do come from the owners of property. You've had other applications in the past from tenants in multi-tenant buildings. This is a multi-tenant building. Ultimately, the, the approval is to the property owner. This is an attachment to the property. It exists that way. One way for the commission to proceed is to have it as an approval for the property. It would exist as the property within the scope of its application. The, the scope of the application is detailed in that FCC permit. The one, one approach to bringing that information forward is simply to have the, the commission require that a, one of the sheets of the plans specify, you know, record that page from, the information from that page on the, the set of building plans submitted to the city. You do that frequently. You have various information. One of the sets of plans, in fact, your normal conditions of approval actually requires the conditions of approval to become a sheet on the set of plans. So, in this case, refer to that permit, the page from that permit that has the information you find important, reference that, that information, and have that become one of the sheets of the, the plan set for the application detailing the specifications of the antenna. As I said in response to Commissioner Jordan's question, typically, a CUP goes to the property. It stays with the property, and it is an improvement of the property. If, if the commission sought to limit this particular use to this particular applicant, or in this case, the, the church as the tenant, and the church had no objection to that condition of approval, then that could carry forward. So, I hope that answers your question.
It does. That's very helpful. Thank you. And so, are we looking at, I just want to make sure we're all, those of us who are asking about this, when you talk about description, this is page two of the Prizer Consulting document that says "system description." And Ms. Pujol, is this what you were, this, this more detailed description that we don't have in the staff report? And are you, "system description," in terms of the, that's been permitted? Now, Mr. Higgins, you're shaking your head.
I believe she's.
If I can, one second. We have a couple of different questions going here.
What I'm asking for us to focus in on is, what set of descriptive information, or is one or more, you know, commissioners desirous of including in the conditions of approval, if that's you, Ms. Pujol, and/or on the site plans or attached to the site plan, as I thought I heard Mr. Vincent provide as an option for this commission in our approvals today?
Mr. Chair.
Just trying to get our arms around the.
Mr. Chair, I think that what we're talking about is, is on exhibit C to your staff report. It is attachment number three to that exhibit. The exhibit C is the radio frequency compliance study.
Yeah.
Prepared by Prizer Consulting. It has attached to it an attachment number three, which is the construction, the FCC construction permit. That is a two-page document, pages one and two. The second page has the, the specifications.
So, this page in its entirety might be, as you were suggesting, something the commission could consider requiring as an, as an attachment?
Yes.
Yes, okay, that might. So, I guess I, you know, on the face of it, this looks like a very, a simple and straightforward kind of non-issue request. Because it requires making findings of a conditional use permit, we know from having dealt with CUPs on a number of cases, that to me, it rises to a slightly higher level of diligence on our part, and that's why I was curious about, I know the CUP runs with the land versus the tenant, but we're specifically interacting with a tenant for a very specific use, a tenant use. So, I don't know, you know, I guess I can, I can kind of relinquish, I can let go. I think that the wattage is low. I see it as a low intensity of usage. Is it essential? I don't see it as essential, but desirable. I see that it's desirable when we look at item number one on the CUP findings.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I do want to point out that in the municipal code, that first finding is, any such use is deemed essential or desirable to the public convenience.
Oh, so it should say "or" instead of "and" up here? Okay. Oh, I think that makes it easier for me. So, I want to just go back and conclude in looking at the changes that Ms. Pujol is, is putting forward. How do I say this? Given that CUPs run with the land, which is the property owner and not the tenant, I don't know then, Ms. Pujol, maybe this is back to Mr. Vincent, if it's appropriate for us to reference this use being limited to the particular tenant? Because isn't that a non-issue, because it runs with the land, which means the property owner? Well, the land, regardless of who the property owner is. So, are we?
Do you have any feeling one way or the other?
So, I'm looking to Mr. Vincent to help us, you know, is that even appropriate to reference a tenant if we're talking about the CUP running with the land?
Thank you, Mr. Vincent, if you.
Mr. Chair, I actually, I was asking Mr. Kekendal to, to respond in, you know, and let the, the commission know the church's attitude about this use. I mean, they're, they're proposing a use to you, and if they're willing to circumscribe that use voluntarily, then that may address the, the issues of, you know, the concerns of the commission.
Yes, in discussion with Calvi Chapel, Troy Spillman, they are receptive and will accept. In discussion with Calvary Chapel, Troy Spillman, they are receptive and will accept that condition, and it's specific to the church use. That's their intention. I mean, they plan to be there for a very long time. So if that resolves it, they're okay with that.
That's acceptable, the property owner, who's the applicant in this case, and again, with the CUP running with the land and not the specific tenant? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I think those are my comments for now.
Commissioner, I'm sorry. Commissioner Jordan, and I'll back to Commissioner Peugeot.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I'm still concerned about the inclusion of those two pages from that attachment. And so I don't really know much about wattages and approvals, but if you include those two pages and technology changes, or the church gets an opportunity to increase its geographic area that they can transmit to by putting more powerful equipment down in the building, when these get approved and they're low wattage or low transmission, whatever, what basis of that plays a role in the approval? Any?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, I would say that in this particular case, the details that are specified in that FCC permit, I looked at them. I'm not a radio engineer, I couldn't tell you exactly, but I could see that some of those details, and I think Mr. Holliday mentioned that, that the low wattage enabled or allows for a very small antenna. If it was a larger wattaged, if it was a stronger transmitter, it would need a larger, bigger antenna. So in one sense, I think that the commission is generally comfortable with the design and even the appearance of the proposal here. What I'm hearing is concern about what next? What else?
I don't want them to paint themselves into a corner, and they can use the same, they can use the same antenna, but if somebody, if the planning commission decides they want to include those two pages of documents there, they can use the same antenna, not change anything on it, but violate one of the other little technical scientific specifications on there, and that would preclude them from doing that. It's like, I don't know enough about it to know if you're painting yourself in a corner or not. I don't think you do either, so you got, you know, I see the discussion going that way. I'm still not supportive of you guys painting yourself in a corner potentially, so I'm going to let you guys worry about it with those that are having that discussion.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, maybe I can clarify a little bit. I think what Calvary Chapel is saying is that they're fine with the condition linked to their use. If it goes beyond that, things will change. I'm sensitive to Commissioner George, it will change. So we don't want to be so tied into the specifics of that report that if all of a sudden something modifies, you know, the equipment within, all of a sudden it becomes null and void and no longer valid. So I think the goal here was something that's aesthetically appropriate and is a low wattage use, because I think that's what they tie it to, is the wattage, which is why we've used that specific antenna. It's a low wattage, low, you know, sphere of broadcast antenna. So that's, I think that from Calvary Chapel's perspective, they're fine. We've sort of spearheaded this for their particular use. If they move out and a new tenant comes in, they would have to say, hey, we want to get this reactivated if we want to use it for anything. I think we're also sensitive, we don't want FM antennas being broadcast for something else that's completely unreal. I'm in that building, I live there, I'd rather not see, you know, antennas all over the building for other things. So I think for, but for that specific tenant and that specific use, it appears to make sense. So hopefully that clarifies their position.
Commissioner Schwartz? I'm sorry, Peugeot?
Thank you. Just a couple of follow-up comments on the two provisions that I still support, including in one version or another, although a page on the plans would also be fine with me. Just to point out that the section on page two of the draft conditions, section two on page two, under approved limitations, where I'm recommending that the reference to the FCC permit go, or actually if it's on the plan, I think it would work the same, that subsection C basically says deviations from the project description, which would either be the language there or on the plans, the way I view it, approved plans or conditions must be reviewed and approved by the city in accordance with the guidelines, et cetera. And we see this over and over again in terms of things that maybe don't elevate, it just maybe are a plan change that don't even need a substantial conformity determination, or it needs one certain level of a substantial conformity determination in order to update. So it doesn't mean it expires the permit, is the point I'm trying to make. It means that the city would need to take a look again to see if it still fits within the intent of the CUP, and if it doesn't, there are mechanisms in place to deal with that. But what it does do is protect from having an ambiguous approval of an antenna that right now has an FCC permit for something of a certain size wattage and whatnot, and gets that intent on there. Because without that, all we're doing is approving an FM antenna, and then maybe another permit exchange down the road could come, which would require stronger signals, more interference, new RFR studies perhaps, I don't know. But anyway, this puts the scope and the intent and the use better defined than just an opened-ended approval of an antenna, of an antenna. And that's what I'm looking for. And the applicant has agreed that they would be fine with those, with that kind of a change. And our city attorney has weighed in with an option of how that could be done, which is fine as an alternative to what I originally proposed. But I would need that in order to support the project.
Before I take other comments, just to clarify, the actual addition of the permit as the supporting project description, I don't think you did agree with. Mr. Holliday, isn't it what you just said when you were up at the podium?
Yes, I was speaking on behalf of the applicant. So we're trying to get clarity on things that I'm not an expert regarding. I guess the point was that we're, the church is fine with the use attached to their specific use, and the look, design, documentation, size of the antenna, all of that stuff is fine. I don't know about the issues that are being brought up with the changes in technology and as it relates to that specific permit, and I don't think any of us probably do. The goal is to have this thing operational for years, they're signing 10-year extensions, things will change. So our concern would be that there's not something that changes within the specific language. I think we're trying to get to the same place. I don't know how to best to do that. Architecturally, we're fine with the antenna, and I think the commission appears to be fine as well, along with the 10,000-watt limitation and the design of that. If anything changes, it's got to come back to this commission, and it's also tied to the tenant and their use. So it seems to me those issues address it. I don't, I'm concerned about getting it tied into the technology of the specifics of the details that you guys, the other commissioners, brought up. So I'm not, it's not my area of expertise, I don't think any of us could address it, but we'd rather not have it be that far-reaching and keep it more general to address Commissioner Peugeot's specific concerns regarding the tenant, and the look, and mass, and the no equipment on the roof, and all of those types of things, I think, are fine.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz?
Well, let me see if I can try to bridge this to a compromise closure here, if I might. When I look at, I'm guessing what staff, and I suppose Mr. Vincent has crafted here in this language, on page two of the conditions, item 2C, the very first sentence, I think, is what this hinges on in terms of our action today and how we define it. Any deviations, changes from, changes to, the project description, where is that project description, as Ms. Peugeot is asking, approved plans or conditions must be reviewed and approved by the city. So I'm wondering, Ms. Peugeot and to my colleagues, is there a way, could we find an acceptable way to have everything contained on the site plan without overburdening the site plan with some engineering specifics or technical specifics that will probably be improved as the technology improves? So is there some latitude between what's the minimal basic information, technical information, we need to have defined as the project description on the approved plans that still allows for improved technology over time? So this, so every time that new technology comes along, which we would hope you would be seeking and wanting to install, it doesn't have to come back to the city and trigger a significant new review? So to me, this is the nub of how we handle today. And I'm wondering, Ms. Peugeot and others, if we could do something with the site plans that's sufficient? Can we add just additional information, schematics, the engineering details on here that don't require us to attach Attachment Three, I'm hearing the applicant's not particularly keen on that, but has enough details for the height, you know, the visibility issues that cut to the heart of being in the coastal zone, complying with the coastal act, and our conditions of approval making the findings today? You know, I mean, I'm trying to find this intersection of what our obligations are, what the project components are, that we really need to focus on, and with the fact in mind that technology will change, it will improve, and we don't want you to have to come back every single time there's some improvement to the technology without it impacting visual resources, you know, these things that we must consider under the coastal act and under the city's policies. Is there a way to find this compromise today for, especially with Ms. Peugeot's interest and concerns? And Mr. Holliday, could you comment? What would you be comfortable with?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, usually how ABR handles this stuff is that it's an administrative review and approval. What I'm thinking through, worst-case scenario, they come up with a new antenna design, it goes sideways instead of going up and down, or somehow changes. I mean, those kinds of things happen all the time through ABR, and they look at, they make an administration approval that it doesn't affect the mass, bulk, and scale, and visual impact, which I think is really what we're talking about. On the, the thing you see on the outside, things will change on the inside, that's our only concern with being tied to that technical document, because it will. So if the commission is okay with the use, and the applicant is okay with being tied to them specifically, so when they leave, that use goes away. So that is an addition, which is sort of, they're agreeing to that. My sense is that it's probably okay to say that the, things will change. I just don't know if the, if the antenna design changes six months from now, we don't want to be back here saying, guess what, it's about the same. We would go to ABR, and they'd say, look, this is basically the same thing, and there's an administrative review and approval process in place for that. So my sense is that hopefully would address your concerns about not having to come back and go through this entire process. Now, if the antenna, I sort of liked Commissioner Jordan's analogy that it's one on top of the other, on top of the other, all of a sudden you got a, you know, 50-foot antenna that somehow was able to build, build, and build. The co-location component would be on that particular, and I believe that a co-location, I'm thinking through, again, worst-case scenario, that doesn't, that safe harbor is another thing, it doesn't have to come back to the commission, is that what?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, I think I have a solution here I'd like to propose to the commission, because I think that the reference to the FCC permit was really a proxy of getting at the specifications, or the scale, or the design of the antenna on the roof. So I would recommend the following as a condition, and I would put it in the recorded condition section so that it stays in a recorded place where we can find it. I would say that the commission is able to make the required findings for the conditional use permit based on the implementation, the following concealment methodologies, with respect to the maximum height as specified in the construction plans submitted to the building, to building and safety, the scale and size of both the support and the proposed antenna as shown on the plans approved, the color scheme as approved by, is it ABR? And the fact that all equipment related to the antenna is not located on the roof, rather, or the exterior of the building, rather, it's located within the interior of the building, that those elements support or enable the commission to make the required That way, what Mr. Holliday was talking about, if something changes, staff looks at that list of design elements, compares the proposed change to the antenna or to the support structure for the antenna, determines whether or not there's a significant deviation from the, as shown on the plans, and makes that administrative determination. It's not locked into any particular technology or any particular equipment style, but it does give future staff or even the planning commission, should the staff say, nope, this antenna is so much bigger, then you got to go back and get an amendment to your CUP, because it's that much different than what was approved by the commission. So that's my recommendation on how to address this issue, is they have submitted building plans, ABR has looked at those plans, incorporate the provisions of those plans into your conditions of approval so that there's a touchstone coming back if there is a proposal to change the shape of the antenna. You can decide then whether that shape, the change of that shape is somehow going too far afield from what you've approved today.
Thank you. Do we still have, we still have questions? Mr. Higgins?
Mr. Chair, I don't have a question, but I just, I think the, and first of all, I appreciate Mr. Vincent's motion, and I'd like to make that motion, or second Mr. Vincent's motion. So I would like to, I will make that motion in a minute. But I think that it's, apologies to the applicant, you know, just trying to not beat the horse too badly here, but I appreciate your agreeing to attach the use permit to your tenancy, even though I don't think that's necessary. I mean, it just burdens the permit, makes things messy. The FCC permit is tied to their tenancy, it's in their name. But I don't think that we need to have the FCC permit tied to the conditions of approval, because we don't want something related to what the FCC regulates, like if the channel changes from 258 to 259, we don't, we don't regulate your channels, we don't care, there's no land use effect or impact associated with a different channel. So I wouldn't want to have you drag back here for consistency if your channel changes. So I don't think it's necessary, and I'll make the motion as eloquently as Mr. Vincent made it for approval of the project with the findings outlined in the staff report, and as described by Mr. Vin, sorry, as to be consistent with the plans submitted with respect to the maximum height of the antenna, the support structure of the antenna, the color of the, the color palette as approved by ABR. Is there anything else? And the inclusion of the radio equipment on the interior of the building.
I'll second the motion.
I'll third and ask the two people involved in the motion to also include then that the staff put some language in tying the use to the tenancy of the church.
We have a motion in two and a half seconds, I think, or, we do have a second. Any discussion on the motion in a second?
And Commissioner Higgins, do you...
Commissioner, I'll amend my motion and include Mr. Jordan's comment.
I'll accept it as well.
Okay. So the first, and we have a motion as amended by the suggestions of Commissioner Gordon, we have a second. Are there any discussion on the motion in a second? That's before us right now. Commissioner Peugeot?
Yeah, had my light on for a bit, actually, to respond to some of these ideas. The motion is pretty close to meeting my concerns. There's one item missing, and I'm wondering if the motion makers and the applicant would consider living with this suggested addition. One of the parameters that was included in the description of the FCC permit that I was interested in capturing was the maximum effective radiated power wattage of 100 watts, because I think, and I am not an expert on this, but I believe that's the one that really gives you your upward limit on the power and range, I believe, which fits with the use as you have described it. So if that one portion, that one statement could also be added into the provision... So if that one portion, that one statement could also be added into the provision, then I would be able to fully support the motion.
Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm puzzled. Why, if, what we're here to review is the appearance of this thing, essentially, why would it matter to the planning commission, or to the community at large, if they can, you know, the tendency has been, we all carry phones around our pockets now, we never used to be able to do it, everything is getting smaller? And why would we be concerned if they were able to have a higher wattage broadcast range that had no effect on the outward, the exterior appearance?
What my understanding is, is that basically makes a difference between a general-use antenna that could be used for a major radio station and ancillary use. No, is that not correct? What is the limiter that really keeps it local, let's say?
Mr. Pujol, I believe it is the wattage. Many of the FM stations that exist today, I believe they have antennas up on either at Lacumbra Peak, and they use a lot of relays, translators, for their signals. This one's 100 watts, it's pretty low, and it's way below the FCC thresholds for human exposure. As is noted in the staff report, it's at 2% of, the threshold's 100%, we're at 2% of the 100%. So it's really a minimal exposure, or, you know, as far as a concern. If you start to go greater in wattage, then you might have more of a sensitivity with the exposure, but it just, it goes up tenfold. I believe with cell towers, they operate with, between 1,000 to 10,000 watts. So this one is, maybe in comparison, you can get an idea. But those still are acceptable, and don't really require much mitigation, as far as from an EMF standpoint.
So you described it earlier as a translator, right?
It does both. So you can have, because even if you translate, you're still transmitting. So they could have things on the internet that they might want to transmit out through the radio antenna, but they'll also transmit some of their activities from on-site, but...
In your view, does the fact that it's ancillary to the church use, in your mind, limit the scope to a local broadcast community level, and not a broader level? The fact that it's ancillary to your church use, the purpose?
Well, I think what you're, if I understand what you're trying to get, is that the radio antenna is for the church to use. How, I mean, are we trying to restrict how far they can spread that message? I don't think we're trying to do that, you know, as far as how far they can reach? Is that what you're trying to adjust?
No, 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 I'm not actually trying to get into that so much, but I want to make sure that it's really ancillary, well, maybe it's enough just to say ancillary to the church use. Maybe that will do it, because to me, that's the clear. I don't want it, I would not want it to see it be able to convert to standalone, commercial radio enterprise.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kockindal. Okay, we have a motion on the floor that's been amended to include, if I believe, if I can recall, that it's ancillary to the church use? It's for the church use? There's been...
Ties to church use.
Ties to church use, okay. So that's the motion, we have a second.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I can speak to that one point. I'm fine, I understand that it's tied to the applicant's, and that if the applicant leaves, the use ends. I, I'm a little uncomfortable with saying that it's ancillary to, to the church, you know, they are the applicant, yes. From a standpoint of, if they are no longer a tenant, then the antenna comes down, that's one thing. As far as what message, or what information they convey over that, if they choose and pay the right licensing fees to broadcast music, that's their business. That's the First Amendment. So I don't want, I don't want the commission's conditions to be talking about the content of the broadcast. It is, this applicant has asked to broadcast information over an FM channel, they have, if they have the right permits from the FCC, they can do that. If they cease to be a tenant in this building, then when they go, the antenna goes with them. But as far as what they broadcast over that antenna, I don't want any confusion that the commission's action has any effect on the content of that broadcast, please.
Thank you for that clarification, and...
I would agree with that, too. You're putting me in a position of nitpicking on me for offering something I'm not even supporting, so, but I would agree with that also.
Okay, first and the second agrees as well. Okay, we have a first and a second, we're on the amended motion. Would we need, I don't know if we need to take a voice approval, but why don't we start with Mr., you're the maker of the motion, start with Mr. Thompson, Commissioner Thompson, on the motion as amended?
I don't understand the question.
Do you approve?
We have a motion on the floor, I'm ready to vote.
That's what I'm asking for, do you, your vote?
Let's do a voice roll call.
Oh, you want to do a voice roll call?
Yep, thank you.
Aye.
Aye. I accept that curtailment there, and I will, I will vote yes.
Okay, Commissioner Higgins?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Lodge?
Aye.
And I say aye, so it's unanimous.
The decision is appealable?
You really want me to say that? Okay, this, this approval is appealable for 10 calendar days. Okay, next item on the agenda would be the administrative agenda, and it's committee and liaison reports, staff hearing officer liaison report.
Nothing out of the ordinary yesterday, other than three items in 19 minutes. I had hopes for us on the first item today, after that one, but not quite after that. But just existing improvements and setbacks where the footprint was already there, that type of stuff, nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Any other committee reports, liaison reports? Commissioner Lodge?
Yes, on the Historic Landmarks Commission meeting of January 27th, the Museum of Natural History project was before them, I'm sure the museum was hoping for approval, but, well, what the director of the museum said, the planning commission required the path of travel on the museum's side, and he'd hate to have the project hijacked over the issue of the walkway. And that's what it looked like they were heading in, and it was clear that there were several members of the HLC that weren't thrilled that that condition was there. They felt that they wanted to keep the more rustic appearance of it the way that it is. Then, public works sort of added insult to injury by saying that they wanted to use faux sandstone curbstones, and saying that they would be easier maintenance, and would last longer, and one commissioner said is not sure maintenance should trump aesthetics. And so there was also opposition from some members of the public, support from the Mission Trails group, and from the Mission Canyon Association. And it was, I could understand their reaction to the, it was a pretty straight-line pathway through there, and so the architect is going to see if they can soften it in some way, and probably specify real sandstone curbstones. The city has quite a supply in the Corporation Yard, and it will be back in two weeks. There were, there's at least one other project that had been, let's see, oh, 301 East Yanonali was before them, it was comments-only, and there was just considerable discussion, that's the market at the corner of Yanonali and Garden Street. And I think those were the only ones that, that I meant to mention. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few highlights from the most recent Water Commission meeting, though we were all pleased that it has rained somewhat, staff wanted to remind the public that it hasn't brought us even close to replenishing our groundwater basin and our reservoirs, so continued conservation is really critical. The water wells and pipes in the city that are part of an aging infrastructure, and we've seen some media coverage regarding some, some breakages, is certainly forefront of staff's planning, because the replacement of our aging infrastructure is going to cost many millions of dollars. So staff is working a timeline, budget projections, and I'm sure we'll be taking that to City Council shortly. Lastly, on the Dcell plant, the remediation continues, it should be complete soon, and with the Dcell construction and reopening, then, back on track. Secondly, though not directly connected to our housing subcommittee work, Commissioner Campenell and I attended the January 22 joint affordable housing task force meeting with the cities and the county, these are the South Coast cities, the County of Santa Barbara, and the various nonprofit organizations that develop affordable housing projects. A few highlights there, we had a very lengthy presentation by UCSB. As you probably know, if you've been out that way, there is a great deal of new housing that's going up, both for undergraduates, graduate students, and faculty. And some, some notes there were that they're creating them almost in a village-like design, so, and this is with the intention of providing study areas, some leisure areas, professionally managed, so that there's management oversight for the properties as well, and with an encouragement, then, for the students to not necessarily spend their time in Isla Vista, enjoying themselves and their colleagues, but to do this within the context of these villages, also looking to improve traffic circulation by containing some of the automobile ownership. I won't go into too much detail there, but I think for the first time, they've, they are installing more bicycle racks than they have students. I noticed that for 2,300 students, they are installing 2,700 bike racks, so they're really working hard to try to get the students, kind of move them away from car ownership, using their cars to move in and around the campus, Isla Vista, and elsewhere. Also, as you probably read in the media, there is a new financial agreement with MTD for UCSB to subsidize some additional bus lines, and I think that's also going to help with the City College issue. I know we're going to probably be talking about City College and its needs later in the year, but I thought it was a very worthwhile task force meeting. We also heard very briefly from City College as to what they have underway, and I'll address that perhaps next month. Thank you.
Okay, let's see, I'll start with the Architectural Board of Review meeting that occurred this past Monday on the first, and Commissioner Lodge attended in person, I saw it on tape. There were a number of items on the agenda, four of which are coming to us, or may come to us. One, 321 Oceano Avenue is in R2, it's an R2 zone within the coastal zone, and that received good review from the ABR board, and that would be coming to us for a coastal development permit, and also a zoning modification due to a slope on the lot area to allow the number of units that are being requested. So that will come from planning commission review. And then 116 Cota Street was a submission in the CM zone for an AUD project with a request to exceed the 45-foot height limit, and Commissioner Lodge was at that meeting. It's interesting, and perhaps at a lunch meeting sometime, we can go through the, if that request is made, how the planning commission and design board interface is relative to determination of whether that's appropriate or not. However, the design was, why don't you, as far as the action at the meeting, Commissioner Lodge, you might want to talk about that, what took place.
Oh, well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I did speak up at that meeting, because the staff had provided for the first time a staff report for the ABR on this project. It was 116 East Cota, which is directly to the west of Ortega Park, and I think there are 322 units under the AUD high priority program that are in the process somewhere. And this is the first to ask to exceed the 45-foot limit, and there are findings that have to be made. The architect seemed to say, he, his point of view, well, it would be nice if there were 12-foot ceilings, and so on, in these 800-square-foot units. And it, the board was not, I think, I think every one of them had an issue with going over the 45 feet, just in terms of the design, the shading that it would do to the park, and so on. There has been one request to exceed the 45 feet, and I think the intention of the council, when the general plan amendments and the AUD ordinance were adopted, and the revised general plan was adopted, was that anything over 45 feet is going to be pretty rare. And there is one that we approved, and that was the very small building in the middle of the roof, on top of the Santa Barbara Museum of Art, which can't be seen from anywhere, except perhaps the courthouse tower, or maybe the top deck of the parking structure. But, so it will be interesting to see how the architect responds to the comments on that one.
Yeah, that was the initial concept review, so we'll keep track of how that proceeds through the design phase. Also, 701 North Milpas Street is a mixed-use project under the AUD overlay. This was the initial concept review for the project, Capitol Hardware location, and about eight assembled parcels on that block. If people may recall, or may not, it was actually when the charrette was done, this was one of the sites that staff had recommended to look at, and was designed with various interpretations of product that could exist, so everybody's pretty well familiar with the site. Anyway, they came in, there is a total of 73 units, smaller square footage in total than per unit than would be allowed under the AUD, but they're also trying to retain the Capitol Hardware site more efficiently to potentially be in operation. So this will be coming to us because of the size for concept comments. Also, they're requesting a zoning modification to provide less than the required parking. That's the commercial parking, and they've done a study that show there's less of a requirement per square foot of commercial that would normally be the case, and that would be presented to us. So they received a conceptual okay on compatibility, and their next step would be coming to us, if they so wish, for a concept review.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Quick addition on that, one of the things that they have proposed is that the end of, what's the street, the cross street there, it dead-ends at the junior high. And so they are, in a sense, treating it like a private street, and are having, changing the parking, so that they're greatly increasing the number of on-street parking spaces, they're having it straight-in parking.
Yeah, perpendicular parking.
Perpendicular parking, instead of parallel parking, and are able to get quite a few more parking spaces, which seemed like a good use of the space.
Yeah, actually, the one side of the street, so it's going to be a double-loaded, as we call it, parking, that'll back up. One side of the street is actually, the parking is within their current property lines, so they're going to be giving a part of their property, which will merge with the public parking across the street, for a lot of efficiency. So on that dead-end street, and improve that street, which is also a walkway to school for the kids as well, yeah. So that was well-accepted, and we'll be seeing that one in the near future. The last one that we will be seeing would be 926 Indio Muerto Street, down by the freeway, the hotel site. This was a continued item, the size, bulk, and scale was reduced on some corners that was visible from the freeway ramps. The size, bulk, and scale and compatibility was, looked unfavorable... was looked on favorably by the ABR, there's still discussions to go on the actual exterior design, so it's a design question, not size, bulk, and scale, and then the timing of when that project would come to us, is up to the applicant, there would be a development plan, a coastal development permit, and a TEDR, transfer of existing development rights, all affiliated with that approval. So we should seize that in sometime in the near term, depending on when the applicant comes to get us, because it's conceptually approved. Okay, let's see, what other one? One more would be the Sustainability Subcommittee, Commissioner Pujol was not available, so I attended as liaison, this committee goes through city sustainable projects that our various departments are working on, it's always been interesting to us, we've mentioned the activity several times, but what we are planning to do in the near future is take the current update of projects underway, and coordinate to have someone from staff who is involved in that presentation, come to the Planning Commission at lunch, and get everybody up to speed with the projects that the city are, is doing relative to sustainability. Also, we were awarded by Sunset Magazine, in the latest issue, the most sustainable city in the U.S., I don't think there are any caveats, it wasn't small or large, it was just...
In the West, in the West, moderate-sized cities in the West.
Moderate-sized cities in the West, we'll take it, but as far as the area, yeah, for this year, for Sunset Magazine, and their area, that they cover, and if you haven't seen it, it's a great little article on water and the recreational things that we do, and the sustainable way that we operate. So I think this is all in keeping with what the city's doing on its projects, and we'll also be seeing upcoming some of the other climate action plan, and other items that being done for the community as a whole. So with that, is there any, oh, let's see, going on is tonight, if there's no other liaison reports, there's, if you can try to find a parking place, which was difficult getting in here, we have the Film Festival, and we have First Thursday, going on at the same time, and we may be able to see a couple of movies today, given the time that we're adjourning, so enjoy it, there's a lot going on, it's, that's one of the great pleasures about living in this city, the activities that you can participate in, and the number of people that participate. So if there's nothing else, until February 11th, 2006, the next meeting, we are adjourned, thank you.
2016.